Agents. Up next, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present and aquarium has been declared.
Okay, I'm gonna ask all council members tonight, if you would, please speak into your mic loudly. Uh, we've had comments from people in the audience who sit in the back set that says that they can't hear us. So whenever you're speaking tonight, please speak into the mic. Okay, the next thing we have is the agenda approval, Council Vio.
May I move that we approve the agenda?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda is the citizen comment section. This is the portion of the agenda where we ask those uh, audience members who've turned in their cards to come up here to the podium and make their comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. We have a timer right there that will start when you start talking. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. I'll start off with the uh, first person that I have is Morgan Van Cat. Yes, right up there to one of the mics. Oh, you're good. There you go.
Is this one work?
It's on, yes.
Great. Well, hi, everyone. My name is Morgan Van Cat and I'm from the state of Colorado in the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. Um, and I'm the program manager for the Rural Jump Start Program. Um, and we just had the pleasure of last week having Alamosa County pass, um, the commissioners passed a resolution to become a rural jumpstart zone. Um, so I'll just give a really quick overview um, with the preface that um, the economic director Kathy um, is meeting with Heather later this week to discuss the program, so it will likely um, hopefully, fingers crossed, be on an agenda in the future, which I'll hopefully be present at if you guys have additional questions. Um, so for those of you who don't know, the Rural Jump Start Program is a tax incentive and grant program for businesses that either start or relocate um, into rural economically distressed areas of the state that are called rural jumpstart zones. And um, the tax benefits include a relief um, for businesses that relocate here or start up here um, from state income tax, state sales and use tax, um, and the county and municipal business personal property tax. Um, the grant benefits for the businesses um, include a twenty thousand dollar matching grant um, for the business. It's a twenty-five percent match, um, and then it's a twenty-five hundred dollar grant per new hire um, for every qualified new hire that the business brings on. Um, there are quite a few rules uh, for which types of businesses are accepted into the program. Um, and we do that for a reason. We wanna bring in businesses that are gonna have longevity in the county. They're gonna get involved and they're gonna bring in well-paying jobs for citizens um, in Alamosa County. Um, some of the rules for the businesses in the program, and sorry if I'm talking fast, I'm trying to get as much in three minutes as possible, um, the businesses cannot compete against any business in Alamosa County or the surrounding economically distressed counties. Um, they must hire um, five employees that are getting paid at or above the county's average annual wage. Um, they uh, cannot be operating in Colorado at the time of application. Um, so that's, most of them are either startups or they're moving in from out of state. Um, I, we've been working really closely with the San Luis Valley Development Resources Group. Um, Sarah Stober is serving graciously as the sponsoring entity to help bring businesses into this program. Um, and the next step, since the county commissioners have agreed to pass the resolution to become a part of the program, is that we need agreement from um, the city of Alamosa to also join the zone since that um, municipal business personal property tax um, would have to agree to be waived for the businesses in the Rural Jump Start Program. Um, I did bring flyers that have all of my contact information and um, again, thank you for Heather for welcoming me to the meeting. I know I kinda just dropped in last minute um, since I didn't have time to get on the agenda or speak to Heather since it's been passed by the county, so thank you for being so welcoming. Um, and with that, I will leave the flyers with you all. I look forward to partnering with you, answering any questions you have in the future and bringing Rural Jump Start to Alamosa County and City.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
I don't know.
You can just send that to uh, Ms. Martinez. Thank you. Uh, Dylan Thompson?
Uh, thank you Mayor Coleman and and staff and council. Appreciate the oppor- appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Uh, and I wanted to take another opportunity to thank Mayor Coleman for coming out to the Farm Brewery a couple of weeks ago to welcome to Alamosa in the San Luis Valley about twenty bicyclists doing a reunion ride uh, in commemoration of the cross-country ride we did in the year two thousand. Um, you know, it's difficult for an old man like me to get up here and find something to complain about when I look around Alamosa's and see things like the expansion of pedestrian areas and the slowing of traffic, the uh, bicycle and pedestrian facilities that have been uh, accomplished in the last few years, hiking and biking trails, I think something like twenty-five miles of hiking and bicycling trails in the city limits of Alamosa. I, I love telling people that fact. But uh, my wife and I notice quite often that some vehicles seem to be awfully noisy. And when I complain, she says, well, why don't you go and say something about it? So I'm here saying something about it. And I'm sure that Chief Anderson has bigger fish to fry than noisy vehicles, but it is one of the things that uh, I think keeping Alamosa from being so, and some of them are so noisy that I can't believe that uh, it shouldn't be fairly obvious that they have been modified to make more noise. Uh, and I don't think the citizens should have to uh, put up with that, so. Uh, I thank you for listening to me. I know like a lot of nuisance items. Uh, there's really not much the city can do about it, but I at least have uh, cleared my conscience and that I actually came and said something like, thank you, thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Christine Newton.
Hello, everybody. Um, mine is more of a concern and a question. Um, I just wondered what the regular maintenance protocol is for taking care of the alleyways. Uh, the ones that are frequently used, like the one that's right uh, right beside the post office, that is already full of pits, and I know that they worked on it in the summer, and it was really nice and and uh, even. But now there's some big holes developing. I just noticed that today. And then the other uh, alleyway I was concerned about is the one that's on the uh, west side of the uh, Alamosa Housing Authority uh, family home, family apartments. And it's, it connects Oliver to Thomas Avenue. And that one is a dirt road, but it gets full of uh, holes and it collects a lot of water, which can be dangerous because vehicles are always going through there, and especially now if winter comes and we start getting some snow. You know, with the, with the, the ma- the water that we've been getting with the rain and stuff, if it keeps up, it's gonna build up. I just thought maybe we might take care of that one for the winter. And uh, I just wondered, what's the regular schedule for maintaining the um, the alleyways? If anybody could.
So what we'll do, Ms. Newton, is um, after we finish all the citizen comment, I'll turn it back over to staff and they may make some comments in regard to this or either follow up with you, okay?
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have next Dr. Jones and Louis Murillo.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I want to introduce ourselves formally. I'm Diana Jones. I'm the superintendent of Alamosa School District. This is Mr. Luis Murillo. He is the assistant superintendent. And together, we have been serving in the Alamosa School District. This is our second year. Um, we wanted to come to you today and share with you our strategic plan, mission, vision, core beliefs, and the profile of a graduate. The document that you have in front of you that's stapled is um, was co-created with our community during the second semester of last year. During this process, we held five listening sessions with over two hundred people participating. And uh, with the different stakeholders in the community, such as students, teachers, parents, community members, business leaders, and board members. We ask our community to give us feedback and in the direction that they believe that a district should take over the next five years. We also asked them about the traits and skills of what they believed our students should possess as they graduate from Alamosa High School. We heard them very clearly that we should target three main focus areas. High-quality, student-centered learning, healthy students and staff, and family partnerships.
Regarding our profile of a graduate, which is the bright yellow sheet, our community told us that by graduation, our students should be resilient, they should be locally and globally connected, future-ready, and confident. We know that our school district, which serves just about twenty-two hundred students, is a vital part of our community and that our success is closely linked to the city's success. We're ready to do the right work to get our school to see academic growth and academic achievement, but we can't do this alone. We need the city of Alamosa and our citizens to continue to hold us accountable and support the work of our teachers that our teachers and staff are doing every single day in our classrooms. As we begin to backward design the educational learning system to teach and provide learning opportunities to bring a profile of, a profile of a graduate to fruition and not just a nice poster, we will need the city of Alamosa and our citizens, our business partners, to extend the learning opportunities beyond our classrooms. If you're a business owner, we would appreciate you displaying a profile of a graduate at your workplace. We will be coming around to you and having these conversations. We're keenly aware that we must work together as a community to carry forward the ideals bound within those documents. Thank you for your time and your support of Alamosa School District.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and we have Ronnie Wisdom.
I'm not Ronnie. I'm Commissioner Vern Hersink, council mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. And on behalf of the county, we wanna thank you for the good work that you folks have done in uh, the recall effort of our former, former DA. That said, however, the newly appointed DA has come in and wants to make real change, and we know that costs money. Her request to the county increased by approximately ninety percent, I believe. So we would like the council to consider continuing your good work by making a contribution to the funding of the DA of forty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're gonna have further discussions later in the, in the meeting, so we may call on you at that time. Good, alright, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back. Oh, let's go to Zoom. Still doing Zoom. Um, Ms. Martinez, if you could check with the uh, participants on Zoom and show, explain to them how they can raise their hand, if they have any comments.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you would like to speak right now, you can use the raise your hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Or if you're on a telephone, dial star nine. Um, mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Um, so at this time, we're gonna go ahead and uh, turn uh, things back over to our uh, city manager and uh, legal for any replies.
Thank you, mayor. Um, for our county partnerships, the agenda item that relates to the annual appropriations, it's two A under finance. Um, is, we'll be talking about the whole annual budget, but then also the forty thousand dollar request. And so at that point, um, council can discuss that, that request, and then obviously it's council's prerogative if you wanna ask the representatives for any other comments or, or anything like that. So um, if you can stay till two A, um, there'll be a much more in-depth conversation about that. Um, Dr. Jones, um, I was connecting with Counselor Daniel, and I think we just kinda had some confusion. Um, as far as getting updates um, from the school district, I hate you crammed all of that into three minutes. Um, something we've used to do in the past is either have a breakfast, lunch, or dinner, both with administration council um, and your school board, so I don't know if that's something maybe you would also be interested in, so I'll reach out to you separately, and then we won't be limited to three minutes type of situation. So um, I'll follow up there. Um, in regards to loud vehicles, I've heard um, a lot of the same annoying loud vehicles as well, so I'll connect with the chief. This is obviously something I think other communities look at. Sometimes it might be a resource and how do you prosecute and, and those types of things. Um, but let me connect with the chief and, and we can take a look at that. Um, I do have a meeting with um, Kathy, I believe uh, tomorrow or Friday regarding the Rural Jump Start. Um, I was aware of the program when it first came out, which was way back when Randy, Randy Wright was the director for ASIS. I think there's been some changes. Um, so I just need to be kind of caught up on that before knowing how we wanna proceed. So um, that meeting is, is coming up soon. And then finally, Harry, if you wanna make your way up, um, I think that, that we do have somewhat of a, a rotation of what we do for treatment with alleyways, but I also know from talking to Harry, we are just seeing a lot of stress on our street department and with some of the vacancies, but the increased workload, we're really struggling to getting to some of our projects. And so, Harry, when, when we're in good times, do we, what is our regular kinda maintenance for alleyways?
Kind of depending on the condition of the alleyways, our, our standard practice is we, we grade them twice, maybe three times a year. This sure has been a little bit of a challenge. We, we don't, haven't been able to fill our uh, equipment operator position, so we've been uh, lacking personnel. Uh, but with also all the extra rain that we've had, we typically don't get in the alleyways when they're full of puddles. We've gotta get in and fill them first, so we're just a little bit behind with our projects. So we, we do have it on our schedule. We'll get to it this year.
And I did make note of the two that, that were brought up tonight, and I'm sure Harry probably did as well. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Harry, can you connect?
Yeah, can you connect if you don't mind, Harry? Thank you so much. Alright, okay, so we're gonna go on down the agenda to uh, ceremonial items. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, uh, proclamation. I, I see we have some uh, members in the audience uh, who are here for that proclamation. If you don't mind coming up to the podium, if you would like to say a few words before we read the proclamation and present it to you.
So we're um, with Tucasa. Um, we're a nonprofit organization that helps individuals um, who have experienced domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking. Um, we just wanted to acknowledge Domestic Violence Awareness Month and um, share with everybody we're having an event um, October fourteenth to honor those who survived and have experienced domestic violence. So we're just really excited to bring the awareness to Alamosa.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And don't leave yet. I just wanna see if anyone has any comments before we read the proclamation and present it to you. Uh, Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, mayor.
Welcome.
I am so excited you all are here, and I love when you come and talk, but could you, so some of your faces are new to us. Could you please introduce yourselves to us so we can put faces with names when we see all of the great work you're doing?
So my name is Janine Hiran. I'm the victim advocate on the Tucasa side.
I am Trina Di Herrera, and I'm a family advocate on the Children's Advocacy Center side.
I am Shnoa Candy, and I am the youth representative on Tucasa.
And my name's Shelley Martinez, and I'm the program director for the Children's Advocacy Center.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and you have a adorable little baby here as well.
And this is Baby Winter.
Baby Winter. Twenty-twenty-two baby, awesome. Okay, alright, so normally what hap- what we do here on council is we share in reading proclamations so that all of the council members get an opportunity to present proclamations throughout the year. Counselor Kreb is our new, newest council member, and this is her first time reading a proclamation. And she is really connected with uh, Tucasa and the efforts that you um, do throughout the community, so uh, she will be reading a proclamation, and then we'll come down and take a group picture with you all, okay? Alright, good. You're up, Counselor Kreb.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to read it. It is an honor. The city of Alamosa proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, more than twenty thousand calls are placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide every day. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and a nation as a whole. And whereas, Alamosa joins with others across the state of Colorado and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them, and holding offenders accountable in Alamosa. Now therefore, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim October twenty-twenty-two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Further, in recognition of the critical work being done by domestic violence advocates and allies in service of the survivors and victims they serve, we encourage all citizens to actively engage in the scheduled activities and events sponsored by Tucasa and other organizations working toward an eradication of domestic violence. Given by the Seal of the City of Alamosa this fifth day of October twenty-twenty-two.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We have consent calendar A. Counselor Grego?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar A is presented.
Second, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, presentations from outside agencies. Uh, we have the Alamosa School District, four-day week input.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. Um, my name is Andrea Gay. I am a participant on the committee in Alamosa School District, exploring the option of a four-day week. And I am here with Shauna Rothermich. She is a special education teacher. And Lisa Kopley, she is the student data assistant in the administration office. And we have been tasked with finding out from the city kinda how you all feel about a four-day week and how that would affect the city. So I believe you were sent questions. And so right now, we, we just want your answers to those questions, and we will take those back to our committee, share out, and then um, in the coming months, have a decision.
And mayor, just to um, when they first reached out to wanna know what the city's, you know, feeling was on the four-day week, you know, every staff member may have a different opinion, and so if we want the city opinion, that's when we recommended that they come before council and, and for you guys to provide um, any kinda input that you wanted. Um, from a staff perspective, you know, the only thing I would add is, is hopefully there's the communication going with the after-school facilities and, and to see what ability is there from a Friday perspective. But that's the only thing I have from a staff perspective. You guys are welcome to discuss those four questions.
Okay, so um, I'm gonna open it up to council members to reply to your questions. We can start off with the question number one and just two, three, four.
That would be great.
And then go around, make sure everyone get an opportunity to say what they need to say, and, and maybe you'll get a better understanding. Uh, so if you could, speak into the mi- mic and read off question one so that
Yes.
people who are listening can hear it, and then that way council members could respond.
Great. So the first question, what are your ho- hopes for a four-day school week?
Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, mayor.
Welcome.
And, and please realize I, the irony of getting assigned homework to answer your question did not escape me. So if we're doing one question at a time.
Yes.
Um, my hopes um, for this, for you, with that, it would be a useful recruitment tool to help bring qualified teachers to the valley.
Great, thank you.
Officer um, Hensley? And then Counselor Daniel?
I would agree um, with what was said. And I do feel um, it also keeps us in line with what all the other schools in our, I think all the other close to them in our area do. Um, so again, not even from a recruiting standpoint from outside the valley, but even within the valley.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. So I would think that my hopes would be that we would actually allow either like teachers to have that fourth day off, so some of the challenges that, or fifth day, I'm sorry. Some of the challenges I've seen, I think with some of the other districts, is that there are still so many things happening on that fifth day, both for students and for teachers, that that the structure around that still feels really challenging. And so my hope would be that if we are doing this, the hope is that it is either alleviating something or bringing something like tutoring or something like that for the students.
Great, thank you.
Counselor um, Grego, then followed by Counselor um, Vio?
I guess my hope would be that you work with parents, because right now, as far as childcare, and those are the comments that we're getting from, from the community is, what's gonna happen with the childcare? How, how are they gonna? Who's gonna take care of the children on that, on that fifth day?
So my lights, my lights went off. Oh, there you go. You, Counselor Vio?
Thank you, mayor. So I think I might be in a pretty different perspective than everybody up here. I am also a teacher. I did work on a, on a, at a five-day school district that went to four. I think it was the last one to go there, uh, except Alamosa. Uh, and my wife works for the school district. So um, my hope would be that um, classroom disruptions uh, Monday through Thursday are very limited. classroom disruptions uh, Monday through Thursday are very limited. That as many of your athletic events and club deals and all this stuff happens as much as you can Thursday afternoon, Friday and Saturday. So that kids are in the classroom as much as they can be.
Thank you, Councilor Vio. Councilor Hensley, did you have anything? Your light was on and then it's off. No, you're good? Okay, and I'll, I'll wrap things up this round. Basically, for me, I would just hope that we would do a thorough job of soliciting the community's input, all people. Uh, and listening to them thoroughly and to all of their concerns because I think it was really important that we pay attention to the citizens.
Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome. Alright?
Number two?
Number two.
Okay. What are your fears for a four-day school week?
Okay, um, I didn't see who turned their light on first, so I'll, I'll start off at this end this time. I'll start off with uh, Councilor Hensley, followed by Councilor Vio and Councilor Krebs.
So, um, I think that the, the challenge is the daycare part, especially for the younger kids. I do think though, at the same time, Alamosa schools do have a lot of Fridays off already. And so obviously a lot of people have figured out how to make that work. Um, I raised my eight-year-old and uh, twelve-year-old grandkids, but li- luckily they're a little older, but they also go to Boys and Girls Club. So I think obviously making sure to have a good connection with Boys and Girls Club. Cause I would assume that is gonna be the large resource to help those who may have challenges. And I know obviously the Fridays at school isn't happening or early release and all of that. So I feel like in some ways, hopefully, and again, we do need to make sure everybody's taken care of, but some people have already started to think this cause it does happen quite often already.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Vio?
Uh, my fears would be that uh, well, I think people should be aware of that your school day is gonna get longer. So there's issues with that with parents on the, on the front end and the back end. And um, just having that discussion of the perceived, the perceived, the perceived notion out there that students won't be in the classroom enough, so that could affect test scores and that, but that's not really the case, if you look at data on that.
Okay, Councilor uh, Krebs?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to echo Councilor Hensley's. Um, with the lack of childcare options in the valley, um, it became very apparent during COVID that some of the larger employers who do not adhere, do not have flex scheduling to allow for that Fridays off or whichever day you choose. Um, for some of the, that population, it might be more of a struggle. And I think it's safe to say it would probably hit the moms the worst on that, so keeping that in mind. Um, also with the knowledge why it is only one day a week off, it will affect holiday scheduling as well. And so keeping that in mind that it might surprise um, some parents that during Thanksgiving, for example, it might be the whole week or it might break into the summers a little bit more and things around that nature. My um, biggest fear around this is food insecurity for the children. Um, a lot of the kids do go to school to have meals that would, they would not normally have. And to lose a day of that is, is concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? Councilor Rego?
I guess uh, not a, a, a comment, but a question. Will the Boys and Girls Club be the only place where parents will take their kids to? Is there other options, other areas of, of home care or, or something where these parents, working parents will be able to take these kid, their children to?
So that is definitely something that our committee is exploring, other options or activities that could be available on Friday to help with that. Um, we're definitely just gathering information and looking at all the options. So we don't have a definite answer right now, but it is, it is a concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Carson?
I, I just figured I'd be echoing what everybody else appears uh, already stated. The one uh, comment I will add is to Charlie's point, uh, Councilor Grego's point. It may be a good opportunity for your committee to connect with Erin and, and the group at the uh, Boys and Girls Club. But in the, in the respect of their new early childhood, that new early childhood program council that they're dealing with because this could open up opportunities on both sides, the district side and the Boys and Girls Club side for connections um, or even possibly funding options um, to, because of that extra day that they'll have to be dealing with now that, that may give their program a little bit of a beef up and help the school district as well.
Thank you.
Um, alright, we'll wrap up that round. Uh, council members have already answered uh, my concerns.
Okay, great. So question three? Alright, if we do a four-day week, what would be your ideal partnership between the city and the Alamosa School District?
Councilor Vio?
I could see our rec department maybe doing something to maybe help kids with doing something on Friday and just instead of staying home playing video games. I think there could be maybe a partnership there. I hope I'm not speaking out of line Heather, but something to explore and look at. Thank you.
I will share, these questions were presented to Andy and um, he used different language than I did, but that's okay, cause we're different personalities. Um, I think he, from a customer service perspective, is always open to looking at how can we be a really good partner and, and that's perfect. Um, I would have added a little bit more language though that we don't have the financial capacity to add, so it would have to be shifting um, something. So um, y- you know, do we shift some of the programming to Friday instead of other nights or some things like that? But from a financial perspective, i- it would be irresponsible of us to lead you to think that we can add a lot of programming type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Daniel, then Councilor Hensley?
Thank you. Um, so when I think about this now, um, we have people who work for the city who are also not from this dist- like they may live out of town. So the more, and I know we do a pretty good job of everybody's like spring breaks and other holidays being on the same time, but if every school district in the San Luis Valley is on a four-day week schedule, then I would hope for the employers and for the other partners in the community that we can have a little bit more of a consolidated effort to have the breaks be similar. Um, because I do think that causes challenges on multiple levels for both staffing and for families.
Great, that's a good point, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Hensley?
So I th- I see that there could be a partnership, um, sort of the same thing with the rec center. Um, I also, I think, I think outside the box, and I guess a concern I have that I didn't bring up, which ties into this, especially the older kids, is having a Friday off and what are they doing with that time? And um, you know, just those challenges. And so, but maybe there's even a way with Trinidad and Adam State. You know, obviously Adam State has the education department, things like that, is potentially somehow they could somehow get their hours of maybe being able to do something on those Fridays with some of the kids that, um, you know, s- so, so different programming and things like that. And maybe there's a partnership and I shouldn't talk for Curtis or, that'll probably kill me now. But that idea there of potentially something there because we do have a pretty vibrant education program and that could tie into the hours.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Alright.
Sorry, Mayor, I thought of something else.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, we did also just get notice that there could be um, funding for a mentoring program through um, the uh, inter-agency oversight group. And so that could, that is a partnership to explore as well for kiddos who may be, and it was also with Adam State. There were some different, um, different partners that were invited to the table for that, um, as well as career exploration opportunities. And I think that that could be um, an option as well when we're looking at the, the work to, or the school-to-work pipeline kinds of things for the older students.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
I have one more thought, sorry. I had one more thought. It's honestly, we're trying to do a lot more concurrent enrollment. Um, sorry, and I'm from Adam State, so I obviously have that hat on. So concurrent enrollment, that potentially we could work out than having Friday classes. So this would be more than the high school students, but concurrent obviously has sometimes problems with matching up to high school hours. So maybe working out something where a lot more students could do concurrently, do it on Fridays.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Carson?
So I have kind of an observation or, or a inquiry, I guess, to go along with that question. I, I think uh, as you're asking that question, and, and I'm sure you've already done it, so don't, don't, I'm not. Um, I think the committee has to ask itself and ask staff what they would like for the students to get out of that Friday off. Um, what they would like for the teachers to get out of that Friday off and, and you know, in respect to the students. Um, I think it's a big question. What do you guys want them doing with that idle time? Do you want it idle? Do you know what? What, what do you, what do you want for them on that day, I guess? And that would be easier. Give you the opportunity to look at that question and, and come up with a better solution maybe, or even some better partnerships, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Carson. Okay, we're going to uh, number four.
Question four, if we do a four-day week, how can we all come together to support students positively and proactively?
Councilor Krebs?
This was my longest one, but I did. He'd be so proud of me. I almost did it in essay format. So, and I know that it's, it's a four-day week for the students. Um, I guess the discussion would have to be is how much would it be a four-day week for the teachers? Because I see the fifth day being used to support the students um, with things that have fallen between the cracks with all the, with all the standards that have come up. And I can see that Friday being the schools a place still active with students, but with, with tutoring, with the mentoring, with um, those would be the days for field trips, so they didn't, they didn't lose out on education during the week. Um, and even actually offering programs where while we have, we have facilities such as the rec center and the library that students can go to, but there's nothing stopping those experts in their field from coming to the schools for that day and doing specific extracurricular activities that, that can involve the students there. Um, bringing back the art and the music and particular sports and writing and things of that nature that has just kind of gotten more and more shifted to the side to focus on the core. Fridays could be used um, to build up those as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs. Councilor uh, Daniel, then Councilor Vio?
Thank you. So I was fortunate to be part of a listening session last week with students. Um, and that is, so thank you for coming to do what we talked about. Um, and I'm sorry that I was confusing. Um, but also, one of the things that I heard very clearly in that listening session was how to connect, like some of those students were really lacking in some connection, both connection to other students and connection to their community as a whole. Um, and the feelings of safety and security. Um, and so I will be talking about that in my council comment later tonight. Um, what some of the observations that I had were, but I, I think when we talk about proactively um, and positively engaging students, not just the students who are ready to go, not just your um, National Honor Society students and your student council students, but the students right now who don't participate in activities cause maybe they can't come every day for practice. Um, Principal Oliver was, was actually like a really, like are there club sports we could do on Fridays? Where people could drop in and they don't have to show up every time, but they have a place to be connected. And so those types of connections, ensuring that those students, all students have access to connect in the way that's best for them, whether that's chess, whether that's science, whether that's just needing a safe place to be. Um, and I don't know that that necessarily needs to be the school on a Friday, but what could it be in our community and how can we support those positive connections?
That's great, thank you.
And Mayor, I just should have said this at the beginning, as you guys are wildly taking notes. We do record these and they'll be on our YouTube. So if you feel like you've missed anything, there will be a recording of this too.
Thank you.
Councilor Vio, thank you, Ms. Boots.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to, to Ms. Krebs's point about uh, what are teachers doing on Fridays? I would assume that if Alamosa were to go to four-day, every so often on Fridays, uh, teachers have like professional development days and, and that, so. Um, but I'm not gonna lie, I'm, I'm a teacher and it's not, it's nice to have a Friday off. I have, I've had the last three Fridays off, it's been phenomenal. I have a PD on Friday. Um, and uh, for some people who think, and you got, you guys know this. For some people who think that we're just babysitters or we don't, you know, that's complete bull. If you wanna come see what we do, go to the classroom and see what teachers do. Um, but one thing I, I, I kinda wanna piggy off of what Ms. Daniel said about um, my, my thing is like an equity piece, like I guess in the, in the o- outlying districts, a lot of kids are working like on the farm or the ranch or they're helping mom and dad with stuff. They become uh, babysitters, you know, that kinda thing. So I think we need to, we need to, really need to think of that younger group and e- and for, and then equity. Are all kids having an opportunity to ha- get fed? Uh, help with watching their baby sisters, some, stuff like that. Is, are all kids getting an opportunity to, to get support?
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vio, and I'll wrap things up. I, I've talked to a lot of teachers in regards to this and I have to speak for the ones who've spoken to me. So four-day week is, it sounds good to a lot of them, but please consider allowing them to have some of those Fridays off. Um, for the students to be there, you know, four days and then they have to work every Friday. The morale for the teachers is really not a real positive selling point for, for a lot of them. So I, I'm gonna just speak from what they've told me, so please take that into consideration uh, when you're reaching out uh, to, to get feedback, okay? The other thing you asked, what could we do proactively? Um, I believe in mentorship, like Councilor Daniel, Daniels mentioned, and, and giving kids like options for career path. I know one thing personally I could volunteer to do is one Friday of the month, I could take a group of students or two or three students and then let them shadow me for a day in my career and what I do. Uh, as well as seeing some of the things that are related uh, to being a, a council member and mayor as well. But I, I do think we should try to maximize those Fridays for opportunities for kids to learn and do other things as well that, that will help them make better decisions in the future. Alright, any other, any other?
Those are our questions. Thank you so much for your time and your feedback. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it and good luck. Good job, Council. You all did your homework. Alright, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Board Commission's Business Update from the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks so much for having me on behalf of H-PAC. I am the chair and my name's Andrea Bachman, for those of you who do not know me. Um, so I am here to give you just a few highlights from the past year of projects we've been working on. Um, one of our main projects, and I've spoken to you about it in the past, is the Maces case. And we've been working closely with the Maces um, Commemoration Committee as well as the Songre de Cristo National Heritage Area on creating um, interpretive signage for Zapata Park. And we really appreciate uh, your efforts in designating Zapata Park as a historical site. That's, you know, huge in recognizing the significance of this landmark case and so we appreciate your efforts in that. Um, but we've been working with the Songre de Cristo National Heritage Area and um, the Maces Commemoration Committee on this signage project for some time now. Um, the heritage area is funding the project for us, which is wonderful. Um, and I wish I had a date for you as to when those signs will be going up, but I'll keep you posted on that. Um, and then on October first, they did host um, a celebration um, of the bronze relief that was created in commemoration of the case at the New Justice Center. Um, and I was unable to attend, but hopefully some of you were able to go and, and celebrate with them. We um, were also called in um, by Steve Copley with the city to review plans um, for the Baines Building, which houses Rainbow's End. And you may have seen, driving down Main Street, that they're working on um, a historical renovation um, on the front facade of the building there. And um, they worked with Belinda Zink, who's an architect. Um, and she specializes in historic preservation to replace um, the front entry as well as the storefront glazing out there. Um, and so H-PAC approved- H-PAC approved that project, um, and that is underway now. And it is a two-phase project where they're doing the front facade now and then we'll be focusing on alley improvements next. Um, they're hoping to get started on that second phase as soon as possible, but it may be into twenty twenty-three, um, spring of twenty twenty-three, depending on funding. And lastly, um, I wanted to bring to your attention that we've been working with Richard Luckmeyer. On restoring the old clock that was located by Arts Barber Shop downtown. Um, and I believe he's close to being finished, if not done with his work already on that clock and restoring it. Um, and we'll keep you posted on where that's going to be placed next. So while we have not designated any historic buildings to our local registry this year, we do. Um, have some historic buildings on our radar that we're hoping to meet with owners in the near future on. Um, and we'll keep you posted on those. So thank you again for having me this evening.
Thank you, Andrea, and I'll see if anyone has any questions. Okay, you did a great job. No questions.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Business brought forward by city staff, development services, quarterly update on housing and downtown plans.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Rachel will make her way up and, and do this update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this is our quarterly update for October. So some of the projects we've done since our last update in June is we did have the ribbon cutting for our beautiful new mural. That is on the back of Papers of Distinction. You may have noticed in the last couple of weeks, there are also new murals on State Street Treasures. They're watercolors, they're pasted on, they're a little bit more temporary in nature, um, but they do add some color and life facing six. Um, these are my slaves, I mean employees planting plants for me downtown. Um, but we did, we're really trying to do water smarts. And there's a variety of really, really cold, hardy, really low water. And I think they're, they're pretty much thriving. They're also deer resistant, which is a big thing. Um, and so we're experimenting with the planters. Parks and Rec have their beautiful planters that are kind of the ones with the pebbles on the exterior. And ours are the more industrial ones, but we'd really like them to be showcases of what you can do with xeric plants, low water plants. Um, we also, the new owners of Alamosa Lumber, um, they're also the owners of Maine Copy Source. And they've done a lot of work cleaning it up already. We've had some good conversations walking through the buildings, talking about what's salvageable, talking about what's not. But it's, you know, definitely as the entrance to downtown with the beautiful parking lot we'll have across the street and the permanent home of the farmer's market. Getting that property cleaned up is a, is a real priority. So next, so funding. Usually I have like a big sticker in the top corner that shows how much money I've had in the last quarter that I've, we've gotten. But unfortunately, there haven't been any grants. Andy keeps beating me. Andy's getting magic bridges and I'm just applying for murals. So we did apply for, this is our second go, applying for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. For Bianca Mestis to do a large, sort of like, um, it's gonna be medicinal plants. Healing plants, history of the valley tied in with textiles is kind of her vision. Um, but she does want community input and she wants it to be kind of a public process. Um, so we're trying to get that funded with the Red Line Contemporary Art Center. We actually did meet with the funders and they seemed very interested in helping us with our mural program. So then we've also got the lovely Walsh Hotel. Um, so we're still working our way through that. I thought it was, I didn't put all of the interior pictures. Um, but I mean, that's it. When we talk about the building not being salvageable, it's important that you know that the interior looks like that and worse. So um, we're moving forward with our phase one environmental assessment. We actually signed the contract today. We need to complete the phase one environmental assessment before the uh city takes ownership of the hotel. So we need to know what we're getting into. I don't think there's gonna be brownfield issues on the outside of the building. But, you know, before it really belongs to us, we need to know what the abatement costs are. And then we're working with TerraCon, which is an environmental consultant, to um apply for an EPA brownfield grant. And that will help us demolish the building. There may be a chance we have to wait for the twenty twenty-three cycle because it's in November and it's coming up pretty quickly. But if we don't have a realistic idea of the cost of abatement for taking that building down, there's a chance we'd apply for a grant and not ask for enough money. So those things can escalate really easily. Um, outreach and relationships. I know that we've talked about it before, but I really. Cannot say any, any more praise for the CDOT's executive director. I mean, I think we just sat there and we just listened to her rhapsodize about how much she loves our downtown. And how the road diet is transformational. And that we were able to do such a dramatic change to our downtown with such a small amount of money. And I will tell you that Deacon just came back from the American Planning Association Conference in, um, I think he was in Vail. And he had people chasing him down, like at the bar afterwards, being like, can you come talk to my group? Like, we wanna know how you did it. And I think it was a really affirming process for him because we did go through the public issues and. You know, there was a lot of scrutiny, but I think for the most part, people are adjusted to it. But again, it's, it's a transformational project. Lot of communities wanna do it. And when they talk about doing it, they're talking about us. So we did something really brave and really scary. And of course, we had naysayers, but, you know. She really did say it exceeded all my expectations. And she said she'd write letters of support for us to do further work on our downtown. I mean, it was a, it was a great meeting with CDOT's executive director, but, you know, we, we really have positive feedback about our road diet. It's taken time, but it's, it's a pretty popular project. Um, I also met with the lovely Board of County Commissioners with Harry Reynolds. And we talked about them helping with the dirt work at the J.C. Penney's parking lot. So we did talk about both for the Ready Grant. But they think that they can help us. Um, I'll go back and do a second presentation about the Friday's Health Plans parking lot. But they wanna help us do dirt work and some removing some of the material and grading. Um, because as I told them, they have all the big toys because they work out in the county. And so. They're gonna work together on that. And then we touched base with MIG who um did our downtown plan. And they are interested in helping us do the, the design phase of the um our funded Hunt Avenue Cultural Trail. So it'd be kind of nice because the initial visual, uh vision is very conceptual. And there's not a lot of details, so to have them, you know, dig in a little bit deeper, obviously we do an RFP process, but, you know, we'd get that. We, we'd get to really explore that vision that's in our downtown plan. So housing, so we've been to all of the meetings for Century Mobile Home Park Sale. Um, I had to miss one because I was here with you. Um, but they are truly inspiring. It's amazing how the communities come together. Donna Melgaras has really moved mountains trying to get this mobile home park. Preserved. Um, and so I, I'm sure you've all been following it in the paper, but I mean, it's the most affordable housing in our community. It is very important to protect our, our mobile home parks. It's one of the goals in our housing plan. Don't necessarily need to build new ones, but we need to do everything in our power to keep the ones that are existing intact. Um, we also finished our annexation for Terra Azul, so you did know that. But it is still very exciting to have um actually gone through the entire annexation process for that thirty-six acres. Um, we also, part of our helping them prepare for their next phase, which is. Um, planned unit development is we've done a lot of stormwater research with them, um, with their engineers. But we basically spent the good part of two months just trying to really innovate on how you can do stormwater. We have that great park over and the other development on craft. And how can we continue more of that, more innovative stormwater retention and not just a big pit that gets filled with weeds? So we're voting for the skate park that does stormwater, but we don't know. So um, we also had a number of pre-development meetings, one for a sixplex, a series of duplexes. A fifty-five plus development and townhomes. And all but the fifty-five plus development are on the south side, which is kind of exciting. And those are all private developers. Okay, so funding, so this is the, the IHOI, the money we've been talking about all along. So when we talked about House Bill twelve seventy-one, and there's big, big money coming, this is it. And so they haven't even opened the grant. They aren't only opening the grant to people that submit a letter of interest. And then they interview and you go through a whole process before you're even allowed to apply for the grant. And so we did submit um on September first, our letter of interest for, you know, the huge project. And we listed our priority project as um Terra Azul, so that we can help with the infrastructure, water and sewer. Um, some of the underground costs that just can help them make sure that the cost per square foot stays affordable. For the people that are buying and renting these houses. Um, so it's three million dollars. It was a really good application. You know, we have all of the engineering done. We have all of the cost estimates are really accurate and spot on. So, you know, it's, it's a big project and three million is a big ask. But that's what it takes to get it done. We did also list as a lower priority, but still a priority. That we would need, and this is, this is a little bit of a back of a napkin calculation. But um to do prefabricated, affordable housing near St. Benedict's. And um with water and sewer and electrical, so a real home with heat. And then um just last week, we toured the Boyd School with Ross Strategic. And they're a firm that does um scoping and um kind of relationship building for the Colorado Health Foundation. Who I think is going to play a big part in the renovation of Boyd. And then um again, we still talk to that architect with Terra Azul every single week. We learn a lot from him. He's a great guy. Really, I mean, I, when I saw this final master plan about a month ago, like it almost brought tears to my eyes. Like, I was like, the dumpsters are there. And they were like, why are you crying about dumpsters? And I was like, because we've gone through so many iterations of this plan. Now it's a real plan. Like, we know where the trash is gonna go. It's a big deal. And so, I mean, again, we've done this for months. It's the most collaborative process I could have ever hoped for. Um, we also did have the State Historic Preservation Office. Um, they have a new director that does their tax credit program. And evidently, there's been huge changes in that program. And so um we're having them come down in Oc- late October. To do a workshop to really let people know that you can invest in these old homes. Like, even if you just put a roof on your home, there are significant tax benefits. And all of the hoops you used to have to jump through, working with the State Historic Office, you don't anymore. So they loosened a lot of their regulations and you get, I mean, you used to get credit if you like replaced historic windows with the same type of historic windows. But it's literally just preserving a historic structure. Um, and then we've been pretty consistent about talking to Iron Horse. I know that, we know that it's open, but. You know, we had to do some significant pushing to get them across the finish line. In fact, at one point. My emails were responded to with, I need you to change the weather. And I said I couldn't, unfortunately. And that's when I handed it off to our city manager, who they listened to a little bit more, but, you know, we did, we did some things. You know, I, I think that if you ask Steve Copley if he's a hundred percent comfortable with those buildings being lived in right now, he would probably say no. But they're safe. And that's really the bottom line. And people are housed. And sometimes you just have to make some sacrifices and things can't be perfect because we so desperately need housing in our community. I think that's the end of my presentation.
Oh, great job. Thorough presentation. Good job. I know a city manager has a few words she wants to say. Did you?
No, I do not.
Okay, I saw you pushing like that. Okay, all right. So Counselor Daniel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just really wanna say thank you. Um, I think there's been a ton of work obviously done in the commitment you have to the partnership and ensuring. And like bringing the teams along. I just wanna say thank you. This is pretty awesome.
Okay, uh, no other lights? Amazing update. Thank you for your thoroughness. We really appreciate it. Good job. Keep up the great work. Okay. Sorry about that. Sorry, Counselor Gregor.
Uh, you talked about the old lumberyard and at one time they were thinking of turning that into, back into a plumbing outfit. Is that still gonna happen or, or they were gonna leave something out or?
So we, we asked them, we asked them about that. I think they're being open-minded at this point. I think getting the site cleaned up is the priority. So we said, we heard, we heard a lumber company, or we heard a plumbing company's coming in from Pueblo. And they're like, that's a rumor. And we said, well, who started it? We think we did. So it was fine, but it's just. You know, we probably should have done some serious code enforcement on that property like years ago. But we just, we really wanted it to be purchased and we really want it to be something viable. And so it's not in the central business district anymore, so there are more uses allowed on that site. And when the new overlays were done in, in the land use code, that was why, so that sites like that can be developed for more things. So we're, we're hoping something really, really great happens, but you know, it's not gonna be cheap. So for the time being, just to make things look better, I just said, it's an act of good faith, so we don't have to go down the code enforcement route. Just tear down some of these things that are falling down anyways. So, well, we'll see how that goes.
And my second question, we, we talked about ponds for drainage. When, we, we did some work with the Jackson Ditch people in create, in creating some kind of agreement. When are we gonna start finally attaching drainage that goes to, to that? And I, I don't know.
So Harry's um got quotes um on what that project is, is gonna be. And um, the piping side of it, so he, he bit it out as two phases. The piping side of it, the piping right now with the market is just, it, it's dramatically gonna be over budget. And so what we're looking at doing is moving forward with the lift station portion of it. Um, and then getting creative on the piping. Um, we also might look at if there's a way to tie some of that into any grants we're going after for some of the future development. And some stuff like that. Did I hand, did I answer that correctly, Harry? I'm getting the thumbs up.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, make sure no lights on. All right, we're good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on down the agenda. We're going down to finance, the first reading of ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I am going to quickly go through the presentation that we used for our public presentation. To get, to receive input on our budget. Um, these numbers may not have been updated from some of the minor changes you made during your last budget um work session. But they're very, very close. I'm not gonna spend time, you know, our vision and mission statement and you know our, know our organizational chart. We always kinda talk about focus areas. This is both from, it's a gut feeling of how much resources. Or additional focus we're putting towards some of these areas as well as staff time. Um, and so these all kinda move, they're all important. And even things that aren't listed are still important. But this, these are areas that are probably growing in the amount of attention that, that we're giving. And some of them maybe might have moved down a little bit because, like for economic development, when we moved that under the city. We spent a lot of effort of stabilizing that and growing it. And now Kathy's just kinda coasting and, and maintaining and, and doing a great job. So it's, it doesn't take as much of our focus to get it to where we want it. So that's why you sometimes see things move. But you guys, obviously you just heard an update on housing with the plan. Um, almost any meeting I'm in, if it's from the justice coordination that I was at today. To our economic development with major employers, um, to other, you know, substance use and, and mental health. All of them are talking about housing. And so that's why it's listed as number one. Um, fire, we obviously have where we're gonna have a new chief, but we also have where we're gonna be evaluating the structure and what it looks like long term. And um police, we're looking at the new co-responder program. So we've got a lot of attention and effort that, that's going into those areas. And then infrastructure is always towards the top. Just, you know, our capital improvement program is huge. There's a lot of money that goes towards making sure we have the infrastructure that we need. And then even though, even though Andy went and got the magical bridge, outdoor rec is still number five. But they're obviously gonna be doing a lot of great stuff in outdoor recreation. Um, I'm not gonna go over the different funds. That's something we spent some. Um, I'm not gonna go over the different funds. That's something we spent some time from a public perspective, but you know, we think of them as a, as a bucket, and then you got money that goes into the bucket and expenses that come out of that bucket. General fund can pay for anything. The other funds are limited um to just those services that they can use that revenue for. So overall, for the twenty twenty-three budget revenues, we're looking at bringing in around thirty million dollars. Um, forty percent of that's the general fund. Seven percent of that is the enterprise, and then you can see all the different other funds and the revenue that they have coming in there. From an expenditure, we are looking at spending thirty-three point five million dollars. And so I just think it's good to start at that level of, this is, this is a big budget and um it goes to a lot of different funds. And so the, the general fund is about thirty-eight percent, enterprise um grows some to thirty-two percent. And then you can see the rest of the funds there. And then we um look at the general fund. A majority of that is sales tax, so that's about seventy-seven percent of the general fund revenue is sales tax. Inner governmental revenue, that blue, so about ten point six four percent is grants. Um, that's what that is. And then you have fines and forfeitures, investment income, a lot of smaller items. For expenditures, um, I would say our public safety and our streets are the largest that come out of our, our general fund. And so for police, you have not only that, that big green, um, that's twenty five point four eight. You have the darker green on the bottom called support services, um, is also for police. And then um you can see the big blue for street maintenance and then fire um is in there from a public safety perspective as well. And then you have a lot of the smaller departments, most of them located at City Hall. Um, and kind of the, the umbrella type of departments. Enterprise fund, we are looking at revenue of about seven point six million. Um, you can see the breakdown um with the water is the green, your sanitation is yellow. And the sewer is the salmon. That intergovernmental revenue of twenty-one percent are grants or the ARPA type of thing. So that's a significant amount of revenue. And then from an expenses, that's how it breaks down between water department, sewer, sanitation. Our street trust fund, um, council one hundred percent has met its commitment every year of transferring five hundred thousand from the general fund. And then the rest, which is the green, is that dedicated sales tax. And then these are the projects um coming up for twenty twenty-three. So you've got Victoria Street, which is that light blue. So that's, that's one of the big ones. Um, that three hundred thousand's the overlay, so where we do different overlays um or patching and and those types of things. The yellow is the concrete replacement. And that till is the La Vida Avenue. So those are gonna be those major projects that are coming up. And then you got the minor design of those other streets. So that's what those slippers are. Community recreation's bringing in about three point five million. Of that, taxes represent about forty-seven thousand. And then twenty-nine percent is the grants that's funding the operations or projects at a community rec. And then you can see user fees, golf revenue, things like that. And then their expenses, um, you have the golf course at about twenty-one percent. Library at about fourteen percent, and then the rec is about sixty-five percent for expenses. And then community cap, or the capital improvement projects based on department. Um, so you see the water department's pretty big one at three point six million. So that's just in twenty twenty-three. We are doing three point six million dollars worth of infrastructure projects and water. The other big one is our street maintenance, so that's about two point four million. And then two point one on a sewer department. Um, so there's a lot of major infrastructure, and that's why that infrastructure is always kind of towards our top five um from a, from a resource perspective. We also keep track of our grants and donations. Um, can see they've pretty much kind of been um going up. Um, twenty twenty-two, we're at seven point three million. And then we also keep track of that in-kind support. So that's where we provide support for the parades, the um events, those types of things where they're not being charged, but it does cost us from a resource perspective um to set up barricades, to have people out, to do the trash, those types of things. We do it every other year. So the twenty twenty-one is the last one we tracked, and so there is about fifty-eight thousand we provided from an in-kind perspective um to those events. And so that, let me turn this off. That is a summary of the budget. I also wanted to summarize the changes we made to the budget following your last work session. So um, everything was, everything but one item, was two items. We're consistent with what your direction was with the outside funding. And so what we did is and the request from the Veterans Memorial. So we added three thousand as one-time contribution to the Veterans Memorial that council directed us to. We have added one thousand to the Chaffee Shuttle that might be an ongoing if other communities participate in supporting that um resource. And then for um outside funding, we split up um those amounts within outside funding. We did decrease the I T hardware. That's when we notified you we could save twenty to forty thousand if we bought it early. So we decreased it in the twenty twenty-three budget, and we'll do a budget amendment in the twenty twenty-two. Um, we were notified that we needed to increase the training for the municipal clerk, so we, we did a two thousand dollar increase there. Um, based on the outside funding discussion, instead of giving the money towards the bicycle coalition, we added four thousand um to our conservation trust fund, and we'll just install the two bicycle things, one at Boyd and one at Zapata Park. And then, for whatever reason, we did not have the Rise pedestrian bridge in the C I P. Um, so we added four point three million dollars to twenty twenty-four for the remaining part of the budget. The design um and some of those things is in the twenty twenty-three budget. So we did, we added that. The last item that I think is worthy of your discussion, and I know our county partners are still here, is we did receive a request from the county um faced with a dramatic increase in the request from the District Attorney's Office um to try to get it at the level that it probably should have been um out of for a while. Um, but it is still a big, big increase. Um, they reached out to see if there is any way that the, the city would be able to help. I shared that I would share that with council. My focus is that if we do, that it is understood that it's one time. So with that, I'll turn it over to council if you wanna discuss that and um feel free to call up the county partners if you want.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call you all up because I know they have some questions for you right now, uh, our county partners. Ms. Wisdom and Commissioner Hirsing. So council, before we, we start, do you want them to make some comments first and and tell us a little bit? Just give us an overview and then we'll come back and ask you questions and follow up, okay?
Absolutely.
And you're not limited to three minutes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So uh, just, just quickly, I'm Ronnie Wisdom and I'm the county administrator. And we appreciate that you would entertain this, this request from you, from us. As you know, we appreciate everything that you've done uh with the, the, the DA situation from before. But uh, no good deed goes unpunished, and it's going to cost us additional funding in order for us to get back to where we need to be. The first thing is, is that for Alamosa County, of course, when you do a special election, that was not a budgeted election, and so we've had to cover that in this year, which is fine. That was absolutely had to be done. The second thing is the, the uh now-appointed district attorney has increased her budget one hundred percent from approximately one million dollars to a little over two million dollars. I think that if you were at our meeting today, where we had the Public Defender's Office, who says, you know, they have nine or ten attorneys to our five attorneys for our district attorney, they're um they definitely need some help. We have more than five hundred cases on the books. All of the counties are looking at trying to do something for them, and we all realize that this absolutely has got to be done. So for Alamosa County, we are abs, we are, we feel like we'll be able to get to this point. And it definitely will um address it in future budgets. But this first budget is like uh Commissioner Hirsing said earlier, we went from three hundred and eighty-five thousand to seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. That is a rather large and steep increase. We understand it's critical, but we're just saying if, if you guys would be able to help us with this, we will, we'll figure it out. Especially for upcoming years, we think that it, I think that we've really seen how critical it is that our district attorney is a partner. The other part of this that we don't talk about is the fact that she's doing a great job right now, and that is increasing our jail population. We used to average between sixty, sixty-five a da, a night in our jail. We are anticipating a hundred by the end of the year. So if you can imagine what your food costs are gonna be, what our detention costs are gonna be, everything is going to go up. So we know that, we appreciate that you're gonna uh at least entertain this, and we know that we're on the tail end of your budget request. So thank you very much for giving us a chance to even offer um or come and visit with you about this.
I don't really have much to add to that. Ronnie is our, our brains and our, and our cheerleader too. Um, as you know, the state mandates that we fund the sheriff and that we fund the district attorney, so we don't get a choice in that, and we're just hoping that you guys can help out.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna turn it over to council, and I'm quite sure uh they all have questions for you. And um we'll, we'll get to uh what we're gonna do after that. I'll start off with uh Councilor Hensley, followed by Councilor Beal.
So um, we, we had a work session, obviously, before council meeting. And so one of the things that came up, and maybe this'll solve part of what our question was, it sounds like regardless, you're committed to meeting that difference between the seven thirty-one, seven hundred thirty-one thousand and the three hundred eighty-five. So you're, you're committed that you're gonna do the three hundred and forty, whatever thousand.
Actually, by statute, we have to.
Okay. Um, so you wanna ask other questions before you wanna ask some, yeah?
Just real quick, um, are all the other counties gonna up their, their contribution as well? I don't know, we can't answer for the other counties.
It was a very positive meeting that we had, and I think that we've all seen the, the issues that can arise if we don't do something about it. But we can't answer that for the other commissioners. We're not, I don't know.
Thank you.
So I think then um we do appreciate the partnership and obviously the idea that um they have been underfunded. And it is one of those things that we want this to be successful. Um, and that idea there of how we can work together and potentially there might be ideas of how we can even for future, not so much in, in uh doing any future donation or funding, but that idea of coming up with ideas maybe of how, you know, things continue to go away. Go this way, you know, whether it's, we like the word tax, but you know, something where maybe there's something that could be done. Um, in that sense, so minds coming together to how do we do this, because we are all in this together. But I do feel um that we definitely wanna support this one time of the forty thousand um in regards to, especially if you're gonna do that amount. We were gonna say that if for some reason you were doing a less amount, we would do a less amount too. But if you're committed to doing that, we're all on board then to do the forty thousand.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor uh, Grego, your council, can you turn off your mic if you don't mind? Councilor Hensley, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome.
I, I guess the comment I got is, we've had a problem, and I, I, I know that, that the funding large part of it's been the funding part of it. And like you mentioned, the, the amount of attorneys it takes to run the office and versus the other, uh, the other attorneys that are working on it. So it finally came to where it blew up. So now we, if we're gonna let it continue and use the same DA that, the DA that's coming in right now, put her in the same predicament, I think we're, we're losing a lost cause here. So I think anything that we can do as a partner to help you guys, you know, to help the community, you represent the same people, I think we should be able to do that. And I, I, and I, I you know, this hardship that's gonna hit you guys, like you said, even in the jail and stuff, it's, it's a tough deal. And we're always trying to find ways how to uh, the money part of it, it's tough for everybody. So if we can help out, I, I would surely support that, helping you guys out.
Thank you, Charlie. I think that was well said. If we give the, whoever comes into that position the same tools, I think we'll end up with a similar result. So gotta change how we've done it.
Okay, so we had a work session earlier about this, so um it's not that we're being brief and short, but we put a lot of thought into this and we had a lot of conversation earlier, so we don't have to rehash what we talked about earlier. Ms. Brooks, do we need to make a motion or something like that?
So um, right now, as we wrote the ordinance, that's before you would include the forty thousand. So you, if you, if you, if you make a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance as it's written, it includes the forty thousand. If you wanted to do something different, then you would need to modify the ordinance.
Councilor Hensley? Okay, Councilor Grego?
I'll go ahead and then if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we pass on first reading of ordinance number sixteen, twenty twenty-two. An ordinance making the, the annual appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Instead of for a public hearing on uh, what day is that, the, the next? The nineteenth at seven o'clock soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just had one come in. Glad that uh council uh has made an agreement to collaborate and help fund uh this project, because I believe it's important for us to make sure we send a message to the community, as well as to our law enforcement officers uh for the hard work and dedication that they put into doing their jobs on a daily basis. Okay, all right. If we could have uh everyone start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate this relationship.
You're welcome. We appreciate the relationship as well. Okay, council. Let me go down to the next item. Motion to accept award of Federal Office of Justice Program's Law Enforcement Behavior Health Response Program Grant in the amount of five hundred thirty thousand dollars over three-year period.
Well, I think Chief Anderson was tired of, of Parks and Rec and Development Services getting all the attention. Um, this was a group effort to apply for this grant. It, it took a lot of different people. Um, but it's a big one. So it's a five hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant through the U S Department of Justice. It's a federal grant. Um, and so the item before you would be to both accept the grant and then officially designate the um finance director as the authorized representative. And I'll talk a little bit about each of those. So the five hundred and thirty is spread over three years. It is to help us pay not only for the co-responder we have, but to also hire a second one and then a case manager. And then there's some other costs such as training and, and some things like that. Um, and project coordination and, and those types of things. And so um, it allows us to know for the next three years that, that the program's up and running, and we can then look for other grants to help sustain it going forward. Um, we, but we knew when we hired him, they were, he's one person. And so he's not gonna be able to cover all the calls that, that we might get. Additionally, um, from working with other co-responder programs, there's a lot that wish they could have a case manager in order to follow up with individuals after some of those interactions. And to see, are they connecting with the mental health resources? Are they connecting with the substance use disorder resources? Um, you know, are they getting into housing or whatever those different issues might be um to better help follow up on some of those issues? So that's what the grant is for. Um, the reason I personally find it very important to designate the finance director is there's a lot of emails and you need to go through cer- certain training, and there's a lot of forms and all of that. And when the past, when we've had that be Heather, that hasn't worked very well. So um So um it's much better if Lisa is, as the finance director, the city's authorized representative. From working on the COSAP grant and some of the others, she's, she's used to using these software portals that you have to use. And, and some of those things, so that's the item before council.
Okay, councillor Beal.
Mayor, this is great news, congratulations, city and chief. I move that we accept the award of, of federal office of justice programs law enforcement behavior health response. Program grant in the amount of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the next three years.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Great job, great job. Alrighty, so that's gonna bring us to the next item on the agenda. It's going to be the update on discussions related to the relocation of La Pointe Soup Kitchen. And construction of affordable housing.
So Rachel kind of almost let some of this out of the bag and preempted me, but we did not coordinate very well. Um so the city, I have moved forward with our key partners as well as funders. On seeing if there's gonna be any legs on this idea of both moving the soup kitchen, not the shelter. And building some affordable housing. So the first map I wanna share with you is it shows you right now where the current um shelter slash soup kitchen is. Um they're on State Avenue. And for those who are utilizing St. Benedict Campsite, it's about a thirty-five minute walk. Um to, to utilize that, that facility right now. What I've known from um the outreach that we've done with the neighborhood, um a lot of the concerns we hear. Is uh some of it is related to this operation of what is kind of a commercial activity, which is a soup kitchen. And, and it's in the middle of a neighborhood um with a lot of residents. And so you have a lot of individuals coming from all over for the meal and then they're leaving. Versus if it was just a residential unit as a shelter, you wouldn't see that type of commercial behavior. Now, there's other issues that those residents are facing. There are other individuals who are in the neighborhood up to no good that are not homeless. Um and so there's a lot of other nuances. But I'd always thought if there is a way for us to move the soup kitchen to a better location. Um that is, that's better zoned for that commercial activity, that that could help alleviate some of those concerns. Um and so for one second, I'm going to go then to a different map. Which is the one that um Rachel had shared before. So this is um a closer view, here's St. Benedict Campsite. And then this is the property that um has been jointly owned between the city and county and we're taking it out from underneath the FAA obligation. And so this little green square, and these are not high level drawings. This little green square um represents approximately where we would put the soup kitchen. There would be a parking lot, there would be a road, there would be all of that kind of infrastructure here. Um and then in addition to moving the soup kitchen, so the city would own the land, we would lease it to La Pointe for the operation of the soup kitchen. We could construct it in a manner that also has showers on the exterior, because that has been something that has been lacking. And then also from the other area that was lacking is on those extreme cold weather nights. Is there a location they could use as, as a temporary warming kinda shelter? So this, you could fold up those tables, put some cots in there and it could serve from that capacity as well. Now, there are people who live in neighborhoods that do use the soup kitchen. Um and so they may have to drive or walk or bike to this location. So either way, the current location, you have the individuals at St. Benedict having to walk. Or with this location, you may have to have some neighborhood individuals walk. So that's one half of the project. It's, one half is not dependent on the other, although they do work very well together. The second half of the project would be to partner with SLV Housing Coalition and Dawn probably still needs to talk to her board. So there's a lot of discussions that still need to happen. But it would be to partner with them and look at doing construction of like tiny homes, indie dwell, very small prefab units. They would be on foundations. Um we need to figure out, do we want single occupancy mixed with some double, some family? We hadn't gotten down into those details, because if it doesn't have legs, we don't need to spend too much time on it. Um so the idea um would be maybe about twenty-five units. These individuals, um we're calling it affordable housing, because what we've learned from meeting with some of our funders is if we call it transitional or permanent supportive housing. There's parts of the population that might be forced out for not getting services. Versus if we call it affordable housing, we can create a housing plan of who we wanna prioritize to get it. And so what we would wanna look from a prioritization is um those who are needing to come out of homelessness. And use this as a first step before they go into the private market per se. Um we may have referrals from Tucasa. There may be other individuals that are getting evicted and they're going to be homeless. So, so this would be um a priority system that we would work with SLV Housing Coalition to set up. We also would need to talk to a partner, either um behavioral health, Valleywide or Adelante. On is there a way to do wraparound services? Because what we have learned and we have heard is someone coming out of homelessness may go into housing. And qualify for a voucher, which is how this gets paid for, they qualify for a voucher, they get placed in housing. But they may not have the skillset to make that be successful. And so if we don't have the right wraparound services for that, then, then the project fails type of situation. And let me go back to the vouchers. So what Dawn has talked about is um as the use of um section eight vouchers can grow through the Alamosa Housing Authority. Um those vouchers can pay for the cost of renting the unit as well as the cost for them to have the property manager. There may not be enough to the voucher to pay for the wraparound services. And so that's where we have to look at maybe some grants from a capacity perspective with those partners. Um on the soup kitchen, there shouldn't be that much more incremental cost. But I wanna make sure that we fully evaluate that, I know Lance thinks that there might be some additional costs. We are essentially picking up the service out of one location and moving it. But there may be some considerations that, that we're not considering and, and we need to make sure that there's not a capacity issue there as well. And so um I just wanted to update you, we've had two meetings. Um talking to a lot of different partners, obviously La Pointe, SLV Housing Coalition, they're going to talk to their boards and their partners. Um the La Pointe Board did consider this at their board meeting at the last week. And they did vote to support it philosophically and to continue working on fleshing this out. And so I think that was a fairly big um step in this potentially happening. And we've had very positive conversations with potential funders as well. So with that, I just wanted to make sure council was aware of these discussions and that it is, it is kinda moving forward and it definitely has some legs.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks, so uh recognize council by turning on your lights, okay councillor Hensley?
Um so it sounds awesome, I do have a couple of questions and not like to pick it apart, but just make sure, seeing if we've thought of it. So the rec center obviously is right there. And I know that when St. Benedict has moved, it has caused or created some strain or, yeah, I don't know if strain's the word. But where there's a lot of people going in to the rec center. And so would this add more to that, is it, what would we do in the sense of just making sure it's safe?
So what we have seen is we have seen some vandalism near the rodeo area. Um I don't know if the location of St. Benedict uh uh dr- increased the use of the showers. Or if it was because the shelter with COVID shut down their showers or other kinda considerations. So really the impact from individuals going in has been more on proper shower use and that kind of thing. Um moving the soup kitchen, I don't believe is like, this is the only place they're supposed to be camping anyways. So um I don't see the soup kitchen necessarily impacting that. And then these homes will have showers and, and those types of things. So if they're using the rec center, it's probably just as a resident using the rec center.
So the soup kitchen though will have then everybody from La Pointe walking over to get their food?
No, the, the shelter will still have their kitchen to serve the people who are in the shelter.
Got it, I was thinking it was moving everything and so.
So it becomes, it becomes a multi-family unit essentially without the commercial activity. So it's still the shelter, it still has a kitchen for those people who are staying in the shelter.
And then the only other thing would be is are we staying in communication with some of the businesses that are around there, just so they're in the loop?
So until I knew if this had legs from a, from a partnership perspective, we weren't ready for any further outreach.
But you will when it comes to that.
Yes.
Okay councillor Riego and then councillor Crebs.
Thank you, mayor. But two of the hottest uh topics today are, are the homelessness and housing. And I think this is a perfect opportunity, if we're gonna do something, the funding is out there, but we can attract some of that funding. You know, she mentioned the fact that we're gonna try to help a, a community that right now is having problems with people crawling down to eat. Oh, I'm sorry, human. Trying to eat at the shelter right now. This is a perfect place, because you got social services out there, you got behavioral health out there. These people, if they need to, to use those services, it's perfect, you know, it would be closer for them to, to do that. Another thing too, you know, winters probably eventually will get harsher than it used to be back in the days. And if we have a facility out there where we can open it up and take some of these people in, you know, out of the cold, I think that's beneficial. I, I, I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to move on it, and if we don't move on it, we're gonna lose out on it. So this is something that, you know, and it's only human to, to take care of people i- if we can, so, thank you.
Thank you councillor Riego, uh councillor Crebs.
Thank you, mayor.
Welcome.
My only um question is, one, one of the biggest things as, as you mentioned. Was for where the soup kitchen is currently located, is that it was in the middle of a residential area. And that's one of the, the overall umbrella largest complaints about it. Um looking at this map, it answers my question, but I just wanna make sure, is this located near any residences?
There is um underneath this tag affordable housing, so on this corner right here is the one and only residence.
That's awesome, thank you.
Okay, councillor Daniel.
Uh thank you, so I just, I just wanna say when we started talking about homelessness as a concern. What, four, five, I mean, I would spend a concern for a long time, but when we really started saying, okay, the city's gonna dig in. And um councillor Carson was like, I think we should just build a building. We're like, we can't do that, right? I think, I think this, where we were and where we are and where we're going, um I just really appreciate the foresight. From councillor Carson and that, that, that the team has also worked to really kind of push toward this other potential. Um the wraparound services are really important and so I really wanna make sure too, we know that we don't have too high of expectations for this affordable housing. So I wanna be super clear about that, people are going to fail out and not by any intention of their own or intention of us and things like that. And so I want us to be very clear that somebody not making it to permanent housing outside of this is not a failure on the system. It's part of the process and it's part of how this service gets people housed long term. Is by sticking with them, maintaining, giving them other opportunities and things like that. So I think it's a, um we have to just be really intentional and transparent about the expectations related to housing like this.
Thank you councillor Daniel. Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so we'll go ahead and um bring it back over.
The only item I forgot to mention is we have heard over and over again. The outcome of our housing assessment and the housing plan and how we're five hundred units behind. Let alone what we need to do to keep up with growth and, and those types of things. And so when I'm in these meetings, you know, what is so, so very clear is we have way more demand than we have supply. And when you have that situation from a rental perspective, you have the ability of landlords to be much more selective over the clients that they're renting to. And so uh, uh until that five hundred gets fixed and, and there's a lot of other stuff, and even that may not be with all levels of housing. Um if we really want to move the needle on, on homelessness and, and housing. And, and some of our most vulnerable um clients that may have a criminal record or things like that. Um th- this kinda housing is actually very, very important. And um, and I just wanna, I wanna say that, and I know some of the naysayers would say, well, we just wanted a soup kitchen shut down. We have no control over that and I don't think people understand the community that eats at the soup kitchen when they're saying that. Um so I'm, I have no false impressions that, you know, people are gonna be jumping up and down. I do feel like this will address a good chunk of the issues, but not all of them for that neighborhood. Um and then the other is, you know, can this serve as a magnet and, and an attraction? And so what we need to look at is in our housing plan, can we take a look at how long someone's lived in the valley? And, and have that be as part of the consideration, but funding may dictate if we can do that or not. Um but I would hate to not do a project, because twenty-five percent of individuals aren't from here. And that leaves our seventy-five percent residents without a solution. And so um this is, this is gonna be a hot potato and, and um we don't have it perfected. Um but if this continues to have interest from our partners and from city council, we can perfect it and try to make it the best thing we can.
Okay, councillor Carson has to come in, and then councillor Beal.
I just wanted to make a quick note um and give some, some kudos to staff and to the people that onset the housing study. Cause um I've said it before and, and it's important to, to recognize that as we sit up here. Um how vital we are in Alamosa as a municipality as, and as a county to this entire valley. Um just as a heads up, there's other communities that have used even Willa Williford and the same firm to do their housing studies. And uh so I just wanted to, to make a note of that, that some of, not some of, a lot of the things that we're doing here are very trend setting. And we're setting a pretty decent example for the rest of the valley and for the rest of the state in a lot of cases, so just keep that in mind, so good job.
Thank you councillor Carson, councillor Beal.
Thank you, mayor.
Welcome.
Uh I agree with a lot of this, my only concern is if this were to be moved down there. What about the folks who live in this immediate uh neighborhood who use that for food to eat?
So my response was either way, someone's walking. So either someone who's housed can drive, ride their bike or walk. Or the most vulnerable population, which is unhoused, is walking thirty-five minutes for each meal. So either way, someone's walking with the current location or the proposed location. This one has the most vulnerable population walking two minutes.
Okay, councillor Carson.
Uh just to touch on that comment, councillor Beal, uh we do see a really uh, a pretty good amount of traffic on Thursdays. For people that drive out that way anyway, for the food bank, so there is a lot of traffic of people that are using the soup kitchen in the neighborhoods going down there. You know, I mean, given that's only one day a week, but still, there is a lot of activity, people, they drive down there anyway, so.
And so again, we'll have a parking lot and bike racks and, and all of that.
Thank you councillor Beal and councillor Carson. Okay, alright, that's it on that one, Ms. Brooks.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you usually open the next one.
Yep, no worries, here we go. Alright, um human resources risk management, first reading of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-two.
So this ordinance, we have um flow with the annual budget appropriations. And so as you discussed in your budget, um the city's um compit- the way we calculate. What the cost of living should be, it technically should have been four point three two percent. But there is no way we could afford that and do a merit increase. And since we hadn't done a merit increase this year and we get compression towards the beginning, we are um only doing a two percent COLA. Um in the budget, and so this new pay plan, it shifts everything up two percent, including all the employees who are in the pay plan. And then it does allow for us to do merit increases in twenty twenty-three up to three percent for employees. Um the other change that's in here, in addition to the two percent, is the new pay plan, the minimum wage didn't impact any of our lowest pay plan levels. Which is the first time in a long time, so I was very excited about that. We did have a few positions though, like umpires or things like that, that don't work very many hours, instructors. Um that aren't in the pay plan, and so we are adjusting those to meet the new minimum wage. And if there was any kinda compression between those type of things. And if there was any kind of compression between those type of things, so those are the only two changes to the pay plan is one to account for minimum wage and then to shift the whole pay plan up two percent.
Okay, Council Vio.
Mayor, I'm gonna move that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two on first reading and set it for a public hearing on October nineteenth or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right. That brings us to committee reports. Do we have anyone with committee reports? Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did meet with the Alamosa Housing Authority um over um at their last regularly scheduled meeting. Um, I think it's continues to have movement and doing very well. Their new maintenance guy had given a great report. I'm very excited about some of that. Also wanted to say with as much as we've been talking about the um dedicated street sales tax and the questions that come up to us often about streets, it was very um enlightening to hear many members of the housing authority understand about the street sales tax and how um the the ones we approved are the ones we can use in the or or ones we can address in the order that we are addressing them. And so it was, it was a very supportive conversation um based on one concern that had come up. So it was actually really nice to hear community members talking about the street sales tax versus just me talking about the street sales tax. So I wanted to share that because I think that's taken a while for people to get knowing. Um, so I just really appreciated that from them.
Okay, thank you, Council Daniel. Council Crebs and Council Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity of going to represent the city at the library board meeting. And thank you again, Council Vio, for letting me do that. Um, and I just got to be able to hear the the reports from the librarian and from Andy. Throughout the summer, there has been just an increase after an increase after an increase of participation at the library, not just from um the children and the students here in the community, but from the adults as well. And so that's very refreshing to see. And with it, the librarian has brought in many programs. We have a three D printer now that the public can use and things of that nature. And so it's with that forward thinking that I can see the library being a a great place in the future. And I'm looking forward to to additional comments in that sense. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Crebs. Council Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to attend the Alamosa Homeless Coalition. And Heather's already pretty much given the report. We had a lot of good discussion on the soup kitchen and we had a lot of good comments made from everybody. And it seemed like everybody was in support from what I was listening to. So it turned out pretty good.
Okay, all right. Council Carson?
Uh, just wanted to update um on the cog and the progress on the ten forty ones. We did have a meeting this last week and had presentations from four firms that uh that are uh doing RFPs to help us with this ten forty-one process moving forward. Again, just to uh remind everybody, ten forty-one regulations are um given by the state to counties and municipalities to uh to give us state level powers in controlling some of the projects and events that happen in our in our regions. Um, so we will have another meeting this next week to pick one of those firms. Uh, does look like they're all coming close to budget, so I'll let you guys know here pretty quick. Um, our counselor, Mr. Shree Zal was at that meeting as well, so we're we're moving forward. And Mr. Hirsink was as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Carson. Okay, that brings us down to uh staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Harry makes his his way up, I did want to share, in case you missed it, um, we did receive news that the former DA was disbarred. Um, the only reason I bring that up is, you know, I think we received a lot of comments on this is a little unprecedented doing this and is it that big of a deal? And I think when the Attorney General came out with his findings and then now with this from a separate entity, um, the Attorney Regulation Council, um, I think it's confirming what a lot of us knew, that it really was a big deal and wasn't working. And so um, just wanted to share that. And then after Harry goes, I do have a few questions for you as well on a different matter.
Okay.
So just a quick update on the projects that we we took on this year. Um, one with the, this one that we're looking at is the sewer project down Main Street. This is one that was unplanned uh back into uh geez, July it was. We had that section there where it's unreparable, but in the red, we had the sewer line collapse in two different sections. We're able to repair repair those small sections and then council authorized us to be able to come in and line that pipe with a cast in place pipe, uh resin based uh material. Uh, this last week, you've probably seen all the road construction or the detours through there. We brought in a company that what they do is they clean the line and then they videotape the condition of the line. What we found out is we have basically three conditions of that line. We've got good, which is a candidate for the cast in place pipe. Um, the area where it collapsed is in red, that's unreparable. And then it's kind of a question mark on that last uh six hundred feet towards Ross. With the company we're working with still thinks they can pull the liner through there, but until they actually get on site, um, that's still that's still is kind of a gray area. What's happened is the gray, uh, the green area, it's a twelve inch clay pipe. And with with the sewer, you're trying to keep the pipe relatively full. Um, if you have a void or an airspace, what it does over time, it deteriorates the upper level of the pipe. Um, where the green ends, we stepped up the pipe fifty years ago, probably for capacity reasons um to a fifteen inch. So there's that air gap that's been in there all these years. And that's the area that the pipe has deteriorated. So what we're planning on doing is still bringing them in and doing the green area and focusing on the the yellow that's questionable. Um, it's a big win just because we can get through that intersection. It's reinforced concrete, it's eighteen eighteen inches thick. Trying to deal with C dot and two state highways where they merge, it would just be a nightmare. We're probably gonna have to open up the the road through that, well, better part of a block though. So C dot's not even aware of it at this point. We're still working through the details and the game planning on how we're gonna get that done. But it is um an area that is, you know, could collapse anytime. So we're gonna try to still get that done here in the next few weeks, but it'll it'll, you know, kind of create some traffic jams and and some problems for traffic flow. But uh, we were able to locate pipe. We're planning on moving forward with that. Now the fun stuff, I guess we'll talk about our other projects, which is State Avenue and uh Twelfth Street overlay. We were able to complete State Avenue mostly last week. Uh, we could still have to lay down the paint, but we need to burn off the oil a little bit, get some traffic on there so the paint would adhere. Um, we started this project back in March, so it's been seven months. Seems like it's been forever, but biggest project we've taken on. We were initially planning on doing this project in two years, but we were able to get it all done in one year due to the, basically due to the funding. So it's a big win for us. I think it looks really well. We're able to do a little bonus section at the end and tie to an overlay from where the project ended to the Hickory Jackson ditch. So we've got a good section of the road completed and I don't know if you've driven it, but it drives very nice. And I think aesthetically, it looks really good. Uh, this last week, we did the Twelfth Street overlay. That's from Ross to basically the entry at the recycling yard. Um, it's a, it's a little bit different type of asphalt. It's a kind of a rubber base, so it's more malleable, more flexible. And so we had kind of that pan down the middle where we did a sewer line replacement many years ago. We did basically two lifts. We went in and did a leveling course and then we did a top course, which gave it a little bit of little bit of a crown and also gets the stormwater and snow and all that off the road. But it's exceptional because ACI did a great job leveling that out. It's it's gonna serve us well. It's a good investment, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Any questions for, I do have one item, but do you have any questions for Harry?
Council Carson.
I just wanted to to make a comment and tell you thank you and uh staff thank you. It does look great. Rock world on it. So guys did a great job. It looks fabulous and I can say.
Appreciate it. Okay.
So the only other item I have for you is in regards to the redistricting committee, you do have a work session scheduled for um next week to do interviews. Um, to recap where you landed is we were going to have three people from each ward. And of those three, each ward member was gonna pick one person, which meant council would interview other ones for those other two positions. So that's kind of where we landed. Um, Holly, I should have checked in with you and I didn't, but since the last update, did we get any more applications?
Yeah.
We haven't. So we haven't even gotten the three per ward. And and so I guess my question to you is, um, you can do interviews, um, but there's no competition for any of the suite, the seats. So unless there's like any significant issues um with any of the individuals, I'm, I I don't know if we just want to take the applications and do appointments. I think you still have interviews maybe for the library board um next week that was added before it, but I just, I wanted to process that with you.
Okay, I'll go with Council Carson then Council Daniel.
Um, so I my concern with with moving forward, just with the pool we have, I mean, I know if, you know, if need be, that's what we gotta do. I understand that. But I'm hoping or or I guess asking if it's possible, we have a short amount of time, but if it's possible to do some sort of quick education, even if it's in the paper, just to kind of reiterate and remind people how important the responsibility is and even enlighten them a little bit as to what their role would be in the redistricting. Because I think one of the big issues is that people don't understand what they're gonna be asked to do. And and it's it's difficult um because it's an important, it's an important thing. And I don't think people really get the gravity or maybe don't want to be put in that position because they don't understand it. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to try to increase that pool, but maybe an article in the paper, maybe something to try to recruit more more people to that task.
I felt the best way to get people interested in it was gonna be your guys' connections of of urging people to apply and talking to people. Um, I know, I know some staff and you guys think this is like really, really interesting. I'm not sure from the general public perspective, it's seen as in as interesting, to be honest. Um, so so I'm not, you know, with the press release talked about a little bit. People may not have read it. I don't, I don't know if there's any amount of education we can do that might make people interested. But if if that's council's direction of what you want to do, we we can do that.
And and I don't know that that's council's direction. I'm just speaking for myself. I think one of the big issues is that you're right. It's not um, it's not a super um yeah, it's not a super glamorous thing, but it is extremely important. And so, you know, I think anything we could do to emphasize that would be would be huge.
Okay, thank you, Council Carson. Council Daniel and then Council Vio.
I am trying to remember if there is a timeline we have to meet by state statute or if we could extend the application process.
We have all kinds of time. We just have to have the redistricting done. I believe it's ninety days before an election. There's no mandated time by which we have to do it. So we are picking the twenty-twenty-three cities general election as the one where we want to be redistricted for, which means that our deadline is ninety days before that. So we have a fair amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
I I will also say I looked at the names that came in and I think the, was it six people, um, Holly? That that they would make an excellent committee.
I I thought the same thing too. I I don't know if I saw the names, but I know a couple of people who have put in their application. And so I didn't have concerns with with those people who have let me know that they have applied. Um, I guess I just, to to Counselor Carson's point, if if we could have a little bit more time, I don't know that we need to do interviews next next week potentially. Um, and maybe we, I know for me, September, I was out of town like three out of the four weeks. I was not physically present in Alamosa just because of conferences and things like that. So I honestly did not have a lot of time to talk to people or to get out there and say the things that I I will in the month of October. I don't know other people, but I did not do a lot of personal recruiting. Um, and I think that's something that I could commit to if we give ourselves a little bit more of an extension.
So I guess, so we have time, um, but how that plays together too is also, we so we can definitely extend it. It doesn't have to be next week. Um, but I also want to be careful with how long we extend it because it can start becoming a workload issue for staff. And is it that they could have met every month and now they have to meet every other week? Like it it could change how often they have to meet as well. Or every two weeks or, yeah, I do. But so, yes, we definitely have time. Yes, we can extend it. My recommendation though would be not to do that if unless you have every intention of contacting people and encouraging them. So I can reissue and rewrite press releases and and try to make it funner and more important and and all of that kind of stuff. But I really think the success of getting more volunteers is gonna hinge on on you guys contacting people that you think would be good, good additions.
Okay, thank you, Council um Vio and Council Hensley.
I would like a a couple weeks extension yet too.
Okay.
Uh, what, who's who's on there right now? Who are the six people?
Um, Don Thompson, Judy Agbert, Rob Oringgol, Daryl Cooper, Donna Weehee and Megan Dudley.
Okay, thank you.
The other question I have too, just so when we, if we get more people, um, part of what raised this was we wouldn't schedule obviously the one the council members picking for an interview. So we also need to maybe make sure we're coordinating on who's gonna be picked from each ward so we don't schedule them for an interview and then the rest would be scheduled for interviews. But that we, but I just want to make sure that's your under, you wouldn't be interviewing the ones that are being picked, correct, from the the ward people? Okay, I'm seeing mostly head nodding.
What's your question?
So so since of the three, one of them was gonna be picked by a ward person, my assumption was council doesn't have to interview that person because they're being appointed. So we would just need to coordinate directly with the ward person to know which one's the direct appointment. Okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, Council Hensley.
I'm good with a couple week extension. I wouldn't want it to go much more than that. Um, because part of when I did the outreach and some of the people I outreach to have been the ones to do this is they ask for the time commitment and things like that. And I wouldn't want it to go so far out that they're like, wait a minute, you told me this. So.
Okay, all right, Council Daniel.
I wouldn't want more than two two weeks. So I'm I'm thinking, so we had it scheduled for the interview on the what day? The twelfth. And so maybe even interviewing on the nineteenth, if that's like before, I don't know if we have work sessions, so I'm not trying to manage the schedule ahead of my space, but um just a little bit more time to help get some more interest.
Okay.
So it would have to be, if I look at your schedules, it would have to be the nineteenth that you do the interviews or then your next available would be November ninth?
I'm fine with any day. As long as it's a Wednesday. Yeah. Any, anybody's okay with that? Good?
So we could extend to the nineteen.
Okay, so the deadline doesn't extend all the way, but yes.
Yes.
To do interviews. So we'll probably set the deadline because because Holly does need time to call. And if we are scheduling interview times, um, you know, maybe we can make the deadline the fourteenth. I'll talk to Holly and see if she's comfortable with that.
Okay. And with that being said, I'm looking at next Wednesday, we had two work sessions scheduled, one for the advisory board interview. And the other one was for the work session of the citizens um interview. So Ms. Martinez, scheduling wise, do you want council to show up just for that one event or do you want to try to push that? Um, library report interview to another day?
I can ask him and see if he's available on the nineteenth, but that would start your interview time a little earlier.
Okay.
Because if we're starting at, are we gonna start at six for interviews on the nineteenth then?
We just would have to see how many we have.
Yeah.
Because because my concern is fifteen minutes and council's gonna come just for fifteen minutes.
Right.
Uh, and and I, I'm just, it's up to you all on that, but what are your thoughts?
It just depends on how many come in. It just depends on how many come in, um, cause we have the six applications right now. If you guys are gonna appoint those, then those interviews go away. So if you choose those as your ward person, then you really only have to. Interview one, cause we have two people who applied in Ward one. The rest of them only have one ward person. Oh, actually, two people in Ward three, two people on Ward one. So there's two interviews right off the bat. Ward four is Judy Agbert.
Can we go into November, uh, for, with that one interview, if we get, let's say we get a full?
How pressing is the library, um?
The library board you guys pushed from the last, the last meeting, we didn't appoint because we had that last application come in.
So that last application is the one that we're trying to interview now, right?
Yes, for next week.
Alright, so how pressing is that one? Because I'm, I'm trying to see if you want council to show up here to the, for fifteen minutes, interview with one person.
I think it's honestly council's prerogative.
So personally, um, I would rather move the one library board interview. I know that that's very important and I know some people are waiting on the appointments, but to have. What, what, what it takes to set up those kinds of meetings, um, for one interview. I feel like that is a, not a good use of resources and time potentially. Um, and so if we can see how many people we need to interview on the nineteenth, which we should know by next week, right? Then determine if we can fit him in. I wanna give him the same opportunity as everyone else, um, but that board. Is doing, like, they're still meeting, they're doing okay. They only meet every other month, right? So we have a little bit of time because they just met. So we have a little bit of time to get someone appointed to that board council. So I would say let's not meet, if the, I mean, if it's a, the good of the group, but not to meet next week for one interview.
Do we have a consensus on that? Okay, alright, okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Thank you, thank you, counsel. Alrighty.
That's it for staff updates.
That's it, okay, good deal. Alright, consent calendar B, Counselor Vihild.
May I move it with approved consent calendar B?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. That brings us down to the last item on the agenda. Council comments. Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Vihild, followed by Counselor Hensley. And all of you are good to talk tonight, okay?
I'll make it quick, um, and I feel bad about asking this, but it's important because it's a safety issue. I just wanted to note that, uh, there's, it's small, but there's two potholes on Ninth and Ross. Right near the intersection that are dangerous. I, I just say dangerous because, um. They've gotten pretty deep, but I think that's kind of a thing because of the rain. We hit one in Bogosa last week that was horrible. And I'm like, that's like the worst pothole I've ever hit. And we're come, coming down Ross and this car in front of me swerves really. Quick, I didn't know what he was swerving at and I hit it and they're, they're pretty dangerous. Um, so just if you guys could check them out, even putting some gravel in them right now would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Okay, Counselor Vihild.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine is for, for council. This Saturday, it, it was my turn to do the, the time at the. Uh, farmer's market, uh, but I'm, I'm gonna walk in the parade for the homecoming parade. I'm wondering if I could move my time up earlier. Instead of ten to twelve, like eight thirty to ten or something like that. Or if a council member can take my spot and I'll take care of you next year.
So my recommendation to Jasmine was, since we've done a lot of advertising for this year, moving the time. If we could get someone else to do it, that would be my first preference. But then based on Eric's, um. Feedback on how busy it is that when we do next season, that we probably do start it more from like nine. Till eleven, because it seemed like it was busier on the front end rather than on the, the tail end. But we've, we've done a lot of advertising that was kind of saying this time, but if we can't get a counselor to do that time. Then, then, then I would say, yes, let's look at moving it.
So I, I joked earlier about going to the, um, parade, but Counselor Krabs covered for me. So I would be happy to repay the favor and do that. So is it ten o'clock?
Ten to noon.
Ten to noon. I'll be there Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. We collaborate. Alright, Counselor Hensley.
So I'm just was gonna say to make sure that it is homecoming week for Adam State. So a lot of events that have been going on each day, so definitely, um, try to participate and wear your green. And I noticed Rachel escaped, but she may be watching on the screen and I wanted to wish her a happy birthday.
It's too bad she did that, cause you guys did sing to Harry. I mean, that was quite the precedent.
That's why I was thinking we keep up the tradition. So I was gonna sing, but I don't know if she's listening or not.
I think she's listening, so I, I would say let's just. Alright, ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rachel. Happy birthday to you. Alright.
And Counselor Hensley, I just wanna, um, add on to your ASU homecoming. So for all the schools' homecomings, what we do at the city is if employees are wearing, you know, those colors and, or shirts and stuff, they can wear jeans. But we also usually take a picture to where we, we put it on social media. So you guys are invited if you wanna join our picture. It's this Friday. Um, at eleven AM here at City Hall. So if you want in the picture, you have to be wearing ASU gear. But, um, if you wanna join us, it's this Friday at eleven AM.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Can you send out a calendar invite on that one? Thank you. Alright, so. I think, uh, Counselor Gregor has to be last, right? Okay, so I'll go to, uh, Counselor Kribs and then Counselor, um, Daniel.
Alright, I just want to let everyone know that, um, I had a very busy Saturday, this past Saturday. It started, um, at the, the food warehouse here in Alamosa. Where I was part of the Spark the Change event that was put on by the retired senior volunteer program. They call them RSVP and is a program that is new to Alamosa. Nancy Harris here in Alamosa has headed up this, this local version of it. But it is coming out of, out of Denver, um, communities in Denver and in Pueblo as well. And it was very well attended and we hit our goal of, um, packaging fifteen thousand servings of, of oatmeal. In a very short amount of time. And so I was, I was proud to be a part of that. And I was very happy to see a, a state resource such as that look to Alamosa to help out with, with such a need. For that, so I wanted to share that with you. I was also, um, in attendance. At the, um, Justice Center later on that afternoon and so. Um, had to stand in the hallway. I got there late, paid my dues and had to stand there. But it was a packed courtroom and a packed hallway and I was, I was very proud to be part of such a historic moment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kribs. Uh, Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just really wanted to say thank you to the school. I, um, I think as. Well, council knows I'm on the Caring for Colorado Board and last week they had their annual retreat and they go to different places around the state every other year. Um, and try to get representation from all regions of the state. They're a state funder. Um, and we were able to, they came to the San Luis Valley. They visited, um, many places in Alamosa, had some local, uh, people talk to them. Um, and I just, one of the things that came up and Lance had done a tour for us. Was how the city has identified this land at St. Benedict. It was one of the things, um. That group who's very well involved in all areas of the state was like, this is the first time Lance, like, really talked very highly of us. Um, and so I think it was a really cool, um, thing for them to see and made me really proud of our community for lots of reasons. Um, and so we spent a lot of time just learning about the challenges within the San Luis Valley. And it was, and, and the strengths that we have. And I just got really excited about that and wanted to say thank you to our community. Um, but also that I think there are opportunities continuing with private foundations, state foundations. Around housing issues, around behavioral health issues, all of those things. Um, I also, um, attended the Colorado Behavioral Healthcare Council, um, conference a couple of weeks ago. And that, talking about coresponders, talking about the things that, um. We are doing as a city for mental health and working with our local partners in the Community Mental Health Center. We're right where we need to be, even though it's a hard space to be. And so I just wanna say thank you for that too. Um, I think it's been kind of cool. And I am so pumped that we got the coresponder grant, like so, so pumped. Um, and so I think that is going to be a huge, huge benefit. Um, not only to Tim, who I think probably feels just a little overwhelmed now, um, but to our community, to our community as a whole. And to the police team who I know has been asking like, how are they gonna just rely on, you know, they need more than one person for this? Um, and then I just had a question, if the people that we had appointed, so Holly, this is for you. Do the people that we appointed last meeting know that we've appointed them?
Yeah, I notified them all.
Excellent, thank you. And then, um, can you tell me why we only track in kind every other year?
It, it was just.
It's just a thing?
I mean, we can go to every year, but it, yeah, we've talked about why do we do it that way? It's just what we were doing.
Okay, that's okay. I just didn't know if there was a reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Okay, Counselor Gregor, do you wanna go last, last, or you want me to go and, and then you go?
I'll go and then.
Okay, okay, good.
Thank you. Appreciate it. No, I, I had a couple, uh, this Friday, are we still meeting with the trustees? And I don't know if they're gonna meet at eleven or what time is that meeting?
It is at noon. And it is at Richardson Hall, room two dash one oh nine.
Also, uh, I got a call from, uh, there's a house there on, uh, Eighth Street. Right down the block from Attencios, that's been burnt for about a year and a half. And, uh, people are coming in and out of there. Homeless are probably living in the back and I think it's even been burned twice. And they asked me to see if, uh, if somebody could probably look at it and. It, it was boarded at one time and then somebody broke into it and then cut it on fire and stuff. But it's, the neighbors are, are really concerned about that it might, they might start another fire. And then the people coming in and out, the traffic there.
I think Rachel's group has been working on some of these smaller ones. They just aren't as attention getting as Walsh and Monterey and, and all those. But Rachel, did, is this one on your radar?
Thank you for the birthday song. I came back. I did hear it. I'm glad I wasn't in the room. I would have like hit Harry or something. So the problem with that house is it's owned by someone that owns a construction company. And so we're trying to work with them to get them to take it down. The problem is, is that it's gonna require abatement. And all houses that old require abatement. And so, and there's also a, a huge lien on that house. So it's, it's basically a loss and the construction company that has this, they inherited it. They didn't even buy it. Someone passed away and they ended up with the house. So, um, Steve Copley and I met with them about a, maybe two months ago. And really just said, you know, we can work together on this, like we, it doesn't have to be a code enforcement thing. Um, but if, you know, I, I think we encouraged him to do the phase one environmental assessment to see. How much asbestos is in there, cause there probably is. And whether or not, um, there's, I, I'm not as worried about the lead paint as I am about the asbestos, but we need to know that. And then I talked about maybe, um, including it in, in part of this community wide assessment we wanna do with this EPA brownfield grant. So part of the, and there's a chance we will be able to apply in the November cycle for the community assessment. Cause community assessment is really identifying brownfield sites all throughout your community that you'd like to remedy. And so it, it might, it might come together, it might not, but he knows he needs to take it down. Technically, he has the funds to take it down. It's just, we're trying to work with him because he's being amenable. But at some point, you know, as I told Captain Mestis, like. They actually have a bulldozer, so they're gonna have to do it. We make lots of people tear down their houses and, or, or have in the past. And so, you know, people with the actual means to do it, even though it's a huge financial loss, like we can't allow it to go on forever. So thank you for the feedback that there are actually squatters in there now because I didn't know that.
Yeah, the community, it, well, the neighbors around that area are real concerned. So he can't, there's still some big pieces of plywood that maybe he could cover some of those holes there.
We can ask him to do that.
Yeah, temporarily till he takes it down where people aren't tracking back and forth.
Yeah, and we will check where he is on that phase. I mean, again, it's one of those things, they really try to let people do a sign of good faith. And so the phase one environmental assessment, which is about, you know, three thousand dollars. For him to do that, we'd be willing to keep working with him. But if he hasn't made any movement on that, then we probably just need to be more aggressive with code enforcement.
Thank you very much.
And before you go on, uh, Counselor Gregor, I believe we have two council members who wanna make a comment in regard to what you just brought up. I don't want to cut you off. Okay, Counselor Carson and then Counselor Daniel?
Just to, for a heads up, uh, Counselor Gregor, uh, I approached Heather with the house. It's been over six months. They had approached us, so they've been working on it for a while. Yeah, he approached me. It's been quite a while, but they've been on top of it for a while.
And sorry, I know Counselor Gregor wanted to go last and then I remembered I did not talk about the schools. Um, and so earlier I mentioned that part of my CFC, um. Tour was listening to a group of students. And there were several students living within the city of Alamosa who talked about how unsafe they feel going to school. Um, sorry, it, it, like, I got emotional that day. I got, I'm getting emotional now. Um, and that they had, like, and then the connection pieces and the things, and these are all freshmen in high school. Um, or first year high school students. And so, um, that, I talked to several of them and said, you know, I'd love to hear more about your concerns. Um, they talked about some things about needing parks and things like that, that are close to where they said they lived. And so some of it I think might be in education, right? Some of it might be that support. Um, I also did talk to, um, Assistant Superintendent Mario on that same time, which is why they came to tell us about their strategic plan today. Um, because I was like, hey, you should, that way we can get together and do, do this. So I did do that. I will do it differently in the future, so, um, I, I apologize. Um, but the other thing that came up, and when they were talking about safety, I forgot, and I do know that we talked about it. But I forgot that we didn't have the SRO position anymore because of the way that the funding for that position happened and, and things like that. And so, um, I feel like that, we don't have that, we don't have the space in the budget this year. But when we're looking at future funding opportunities and we're looking at things like that, maybe making sure that we keep that in the forefront of our mind. Um, to hear these first year high school students talk about the things that they're, they're going through. And then to hear the things about wanting to go to a four day school week, I, I was impressed with the school. One hundred percent impressed with the school and impressed with these students. And want to make sure that they feel as safe as I do walking down the street, right? Like that's, and you know, how, how do we, how do we help them with that? And so, um, I forgot to mention that earlier and I apologize, Counselor Gregor, for taking your time, but that conversation was important to me to share.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel.
Along the same line, I, I think, I think Holly, you, are you gonna maybe put together a, a, uh. Lunch or something with the school board like we do? I, I, I don't, now there's, there's a bunch of new members in there. And is that something that probably, I don't know if we'll schedule something this year or, we're kinda running out of time. But, uh, that's something I think that we could have those discussions and, and visit with them and stuff, so.
Yeah, I tried reaching out a few months ago, but I never heard back, um, some, um, but I'll reach out again. Do you guys want it before the end of this year?
I think we should. One last thing here, Mayor, thank you.
No worries.
Is, uh, as we continue to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. I was so enlightened by, uh, the Mestis Case Dedication Saturday that they had. Uh, the mayor did the introductions, Vihild was there and I don't know who else was there, but, uh. The reason I bring this up is it, the, the thing, the, the school is in my district and it's still, it's up out the park. And, uh, I wanted to thank, from the city, I'm sure the mayor's done it several times, is. Martine in, in the committee and, uh, uh, Katie Dot put together this thing, you know? We, we talk about struggles and I've been on this council for thirty-nine years. And thirty-nine years ago, there was a struggle. This community was divided, you know? And thank, thanks to the leaders. This community was divided, you know, and thank, thanks to the leadership of uh, the late Ferris Burwick. And, and then Kathy Rogers that carried the ball, we were able to, one of my biggest things was to make the city of Alamosa one, one city. Not tracks, and it's something that we continue to fight, you know, because every time we loosen up a little bit. There's this group taking back uh, South Side or something, that disturbs me, because. Now we're seeing with all the operate, uh, uh, with all the streets and all this stuff, we're doing it everywhere. You just talked about Twelfth Street, you know, uh, State Street, we're doing all that, so it's so important. That we, you know, they brought this up, the struggle that they had back then, and it's good that we talk about it. Because sometimes when we don't talk about it, it happens again, and it, and, and you see it all over the nation, you know, how. People are fighting each other, and in a small community like this, for them to go back thirty-nine years ago, it's kind of tough, you know. But uh, the, this, the uh, the bronze deal that uh, Sonny made was. It, it, they call it uh Cruzando los trajes, it's crossing the tracks. And it's, it was a great deal, and it, it, you know, there was a lot of standing room there, you know, so. It just made me realize the fact that sometimes we take for granted in our community, and we need to work together. And this hate and division is, is wrong, and when, when that starts happening here, then we're in trouble, you know. So I, I just wanted to bring that up, and, and like I said, thank you guys for showing up and stuff, and it really, really turned out really nice, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Gregor, and, and I'll go ahead and wrap things up.
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Can I say one thing? I'm tired and I didn't, I didn't join in, to Councilor Daniel's comments um, related to school safety. It's, I'm, I'm not gonna share details, but the chief is continuing to work with the school district on several areas. Where things could be hardened and, and improved, and um, he's had several discussions, I think he's got a meeting with them again tomorrow. Um, those types of things, I just wanna, I just want to ensure council that those discussions are going on, it's not just an SRO situation. Um, there's, there's other items, and so I just wanted to share that.
Okay, alright, thank you all, and I'll just wrap things up, um. I had a, a, a good opportunity last week to go on a ride along with the uh, Alamosa Police Department. And um, it was, it was really uh informative, I, I'm very proud of the work that the law enforcement officers do. Uh, they take so much great pride in the work and, and what they're doing out there in the community. And uh, contrary to what most people think, that most of the law enforcement officers out there writing tickets and taking people to jail. That, that, that's not the case, most of the calls that they go out on are service-related calls, helping people in need. Uh, and being there for the people who are facing difficult challenges. I want to thank Chief Anderson, Corporal Veneman, Officer Hini, uh, Officer Moreno, and Officer Ledesma. I got a chance to hang out with them for a few hours and uh, see what, what they do uh, on a daily basis. And uh, I just want you to, let, want them to know that I appreciate their efforts. And then, um, we had a, a great council turnout uh, this past weekend at the Mestis uh, case uh. Statue uh, dedication at the county building, um, Council Cribs, Councilor V Hill, Councilor Gregor, myself. Was there to help show support, and I was very proud of that, but I also wanted to extend a thank you out to the county, Alamosa County. Um, Commissioner uh, Hersink and his, his team for their efforts in allowing uh, the statue to be placed in the Justice Center. So everyone can see, um, that's all I have, and if there are no other comments, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.